East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Great, thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
Member Leece.
Present.
It's a member Rogers.
Present.
It's a member Paul Piedmont.
It's a member Berk Gonzalez.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this morning, we open with public portion. We ask you to please keep your comments kindly to three minutes, and then that's followed by eight work session topics. We're going to have bids by Jeannie Caroza. Tina Laguerre will be presenting a personal wireless Tier One Design Guide. Mark Morgan Perez will be giving us a recommendation for community development block grant funding. Andy Gates will be presenting on behalf of the Nature Preserve Committee, the Hog Creek South End Preserves Draft Management Plan, as well as a proposed new trail. The former, is it A.I.?
It's A.I., then a space.
Okay, the former A.I.X. Hamilton Nature Preserve. I'd be interested where that name came from. And then Charlie Collins will be presenting three UR map modifications. That'll be followed by liaison reports and then resolutions. So first up is public comment, and we have Lee Daly signed up. Welcome, Lee. You can come up to the podium, and you can adjust the microphone down so folks can hear you here and on LTV. Beautiful. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Lee Polis Daly, and I've lived in the Oakview Highway Trailer Park for 19 years, since 2006, when I bought from Tim Skellinger, who told me I cannot raise my two boys in this neighborhood. He moved to Flanders. I moved to the park thinking it was a good retirement area. I'm retired. I've made several of the town board members aware of the theft and vandalism I've experienced in the Newmark and then RHP Properties Managed Trailer Park. There are 150 units with at least two unvetted Hispanic adults per unit in the trailer park. No one, including the town supervisor office, as far as I know, is monitoring these new immigrants. RHP Properties Newbury Management seems happy to have transformed the park from a local retiree community to a Hispanic ghetto, probably because immigrants have less, maybe because immigrants have less knowledge of American rights and privileges. This is Vanessa Bach and Miss Skellinger, who managed the park during the transition from retirement community, could likely recommend actions the board could take to oversee the trailer park and its management, which seems somewhat lax in its insurance as of a safe and comfortable environment for all, in my experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah Lee. Would anyone else like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have one caller on the line, and I will unmute them right now. Hello, caller, ending 5138. You're on the air.
Hello, Town Board Members. This is Bill Crane, President of the East Hampton Group for Wildlife. The Board has allotted money for tick control. Across the country, discussions have focused on ticks carried by deer, and some people have recommended that we reduce the deer population. I won't get into the specifics here of any plan. I leave this to the committee chairs and liaisons. I would just make a very general point. Since 2004, our group has tried to convince people that any effort to reduce deer populations should rely on non-lethal methods, like contraception, because they are more ethical and humane. Our view has met with resistance. Many people say, let's stick to science. Let's leave morality and ethics out of it. And their position has a long history. Western societies have largely limited ethical considerations to human beings. As Albert Schweitzer said, this is even true of the great philosophers. He likened the situation with them to that of a person who mops up the kitchen and doesn't want the dog to enter to make mud tracks. Philosophers haven't wanted animals to muddy up their field of ethics. But times are changing. Our society, including our philosophers, are considering our moral obligations toward non-human animals. Part of the reason, ironically, is that biologists have found that non-human animals are fundamentally similar to us. They share our genetic code. They synthesize proteins with the same amino acids. Genome research, research on an organism's total DNA, have revealed stunning similarities in the overlap between us and other species. Animal behavior researchers like Jane Goodall have found that they share many of our intellectual and emotional capacities. All in all, the evidence supports Darwin's conclusion that we are all related. We are all part of one large family. This conclusion, by the way, while largely missing in modern societies, is expressed by the Native American thought, by the Lakota, actually, who ended every prayer or statement with this expression, "We are all related." When we decide to kill animals and we aren't discussing what to do with old TV sets or tires, we are discussing how much we respect our relatives. So let's adopt the golden rule and treat animals with the respect and compassion that we want to receive and we want our families to receive. Let's not jump to killing as a solution. I'm not saying to avoid scientific research, not at all. I want to see more research on the issues, which are often ambiguous, but I do want ethical considerations to play a role. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Jason, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no other callers on the line.
Okay, so we're going to move on then to our topics. First up is bids with Jeannie Caroza. Welcome, Jeannie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First acceptance I have this morning is for a car carrier for the town of East Hampton. Gabrielli Truck Sales in the amount of $185,168.68 is the apparent low bidder for that. Next is the purchase and delivery of personal watercraft for the lifeguards. Long Island, Kawasaki, and Yamaha is the apparent low bidder, in the amount of $14,874. Next is the extension of the snow plowing at the East Hampton Airport. Southampton Excavation Site Development have agreed to renew at the same pricing. And lastly, we have two RFPs that were sent out. The recommendation, first one, is for advertising concessions at the airport. Jim Brundage is here to share that recommendation, followed by Scott Wilson for the recommendation of the license to utilize agricultural land at 20 Springs Fireplace Road.
Great, okay. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. So I'm Jim Brundage, Airport Director, and on the advertising bid, we had two advertising companies respond to the bid. Both proposals presented evidence of being able to provide quality service. However, after reviewing the individual cost proposals, Outfront Media submitted a proposal that offered more revenue to the airport by promising a higher minimum annual guarantee. Outfront Media has been around since 1938 and is a well-established company with markets throughout the U.S. and Canada. The company has performed well for the town over the past several years, since 2014, actually, always exceeding the minimum annual guarantee. Also, Outfront has been diligent in adhering to contract requirements of having the town pre-approve all advertising. The displays have always been in good taste. So for these reasons, I am recommending that Outfront Media be retained for the airport advertising contract.
Great. Anyone have questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. All right, Scott, I think you're up next.
So I'm here to talk about the 20 and 30 Springs Fireplace.
Do me a favor, just to put the mic up a little bit. Yeah, it's...
Sure. So we did a, basically a request for proposals for farmers wanted on the 20 and 30 Springs Fireplace Road property. It's a 20 and 1/2 acre farm, and it was specifically to bring this farmland back to production. The town put out this request in May. There were three responding farm proposals. The first one, Changing Tides, which proposed equine retirement boarding, which would be a custom full care service for senior horses. Therapeutic and Educational Services, which has adapted horsemanship, school partnerships, and sensory-friendly animal experiences. And Rescue Sanctuary, which is specializing in the care of ponies, donkeys, and miniature horses. The second one was Ocean to Earth, which primarily wants to grow berries and row crops. They're also interested in a U-PIC possibility, to be determined and worked out with the town. And he's currently farming on three-plus acres of land made available by iconic land trust. And the third was Amber Waves. Many of you know Amber Waves from their farm on Hen Market on Amagansett. They provide many opportunities for people to learn farming and actually where their food comes from, as well as helping train interns to not only learn hands-on farming practices, but also the technique and education on the business of farming, which is a great opportunity for them, not just the one, but as a whole, a holistic. Part of the town's goal for acquiring farmland is to ensure the land stays in production, but also to give new farmers an opportunity to have a portion of the land to grow a business in an area where land and homeownership is difficult, to say the least. After reviewing the proposals of the farmers and after a good deal of discussion and dialogue with the farmers, the town concluded that we could split up the land to accommodate all three farmers. So the proposal is to break the parcel, not quite in thirds, but equitably between the three farmers. And we've been working on a license agreement, which I've shared with the board, and so I would recommend that the town proceed in that fashion.
Great.
Any questions?
Any questions for Scott?
No, I just think it's another opportunity for the town to bring back some of our agrarian roots, and I thank the board for moving on that and your efforts, also, Scott.
Beautiful. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our second topic, which is personal wireless Tier One Design Guide with Tina Laguerre. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you, Supervisor. Give me a minute, I'm going to bring up the presentation. Okay, greetings, Town Board Members. Thanks for allowing me some time today to talk about the proposal to create a design guidelines document for small cell or Tier One wireless facilities in the right-of-way. First thing, what is a design guideline? It is going to be a comprehensive manual that will describe the regulations and design standards that apply to placement of wireless telecommunications facilities in the town of East Hampton. First, some background. These are the types of wireless facilities that are defined in Town Code. The Tier One, or small wireless facilities, are what I'm focusing on in the design guidelines proposal. Those are facilities on poles in Town Right-of-Way. And there's other types of facilities that will not be addressed in the guidance. That's Tier Two. Those are wireless facilities that are installed on eligible support structures, buildings. They can be on public or private property. And then there's the Tier Three. Those are new towers or other larger structures, mostly for transmission equipment, often outside the right-of-way. And that's on public or private property. To focus on why we are proposing... Okay. To focus on why we're proposing for these, I will explain a little bit of the background. We do already have several rules and requirements that impact wireless review. FCC, of course, provides the overarching regulations and restricts how the town can regulate wireless facilities. They stipulate the time limits that we have to review, the applications within. But design aesthetics are within local purview to determine and guide. We also have our Town Code. Changes were enacted in 2022, and we do include many design elements that impact the appearance of the Tier One facilities. Currently, the process for Tier One is an entirely administrative procedure, which means it does not go through a public review process or a planning board review process. This means that the planning department interfaces directly with developers. And working with our technical consultants, Cityscape, we either approve or make comments on the applications as they come to us. This type of review is helpful and appropriate for Tier One facilities, because the timeline that we have to review and approve them is so short. But it also means that in order to get really good quality projects, we need to be very crisp on our design guidance. So this underscores the reason that we're proposing this manual, because we want to be sure that we're guiding the process in an efficient and productive manner. We also have the Wireless Master Plan, which, as you guys all know, did set forth the overarching plan for the town and its wireless facilities. And it did include a visual preference survey, which I have on this side, and I'll explain more. So all these together, they are a good framework, and we are proposing to enhance and complement them with the design guidelines effort. This next slide shows pictures, just a snapshot of the variation, the types of Tier One facilities you can have in the street right-of-way. These were the types of pictures that were shown in the community preference survey I showed on the other slide. So you can see here, you can have concealed facilities, and that's this photo here, the one all the way to the left, and then the third one from the left. Those are the concealed types. They're often sometimes referred to as stealth approaches. This has all of the facilities, like the wiring and the equipment, kind of hidden within the pole structure. And then there's the non-concealed options, which are the second and fourth photo, which show more of the equipment on the outside. They can be painted a variety of colors. The equipment installations can be at varying heights within the pole structure. So there's a lot of variation, even for this small type of thing. The stealth approaches shown on this slide are the ones that scored most favorably in the visual preference survey with the community. The one all the way to the left, about 84, 87% of people said they thought that was appropriate for East Hampton. And the third one from the left, about 75% of respondents said they felt that was appropriate for East Hampton. All these design choices must be made balancing technical considerations and the functionality of the facilities. And we do also want people, developers, to co-locate, which does make things a little more complicated, because you want to make sure that you accommodate space for different providers, even within a sleeker-looking approach. So balancing design and technical effectiveness is very important. And just a quick note on this, this picture here is a facility where things are co-located, but design does not seem to be something that was really carefully focused on, right? We definitely wouldn't want something that looked like that here. We think there'll be many benefits to creating this guidance document. Having a structured way to communicate community preference on design input is key, especially in the absence of board review and public review for each of the applications. We feel that this manual can help be that input into the design process. This will also increase efficiency. By allowing developers to know during their early planning the types of facilities that East Hampton would be more welcoming to, it can facilitate a more efficient design process on their end. It'll enhance the planning department's efficiency as well. We're giving us a really good, easy way to explain to applicants what we want to see, make sure that we're consistent in how we're communicating, and help us get consistent and high-quality outcomes. And of course, this is all in support of our want to maintain the town's standards and maintain our rural aesthetic. So the next slides have the detailed proposal. Right, on the whole, it is a guidance document that's going to balance federal requirements and local concerns. We are going to look at pulling a lot of different types of information together, matching infrastructure that exists, what coloring we want, concealment techniques that we feel are effective, recommendations for consistent equipment cabinet treatment, consistent cabinet placement materials. We'll consider special districts, and we do intend to work with other entities in the town, the Highway Department, the town attorneys, to make sure we get a collaborative approach and have input from the different voices involved. We'll also, subject this to public review, we will want to come back to the Town Board with the draft of the manual, get your comments, hopefully receive public comments on it as well. So this is just the scope. I just described that very briefly. And if the Town Board's amenable to taking this step, there is a resolution proposed at this meeting, and we can have Cityscape get started, and we'll come back to the Town Board and community to discuss the recommendations and incorporate input. Thank you.
Questions for Tina?
Yes, I support this fully. I think whatever expenditure will really be offset by the amount of staff time. That will be reduced in trying to verbally talk to each applicant about what is needed. I think it definitely will increase the efficiency, and we will have, as you said, a high-quality, a higher-quality output. And it just makes it easier for people trying to do things to have a set of guidelines in front of them. I'm supportive of this, and I would be supportive of other types of guidelines for the public as well and for developers, to kind of just set the stage for what the town is looking for, before you get to the need to sit down and spend staff time doing that. And I think the consistency, it certainly will add to consistent review as well. So I'm supportive.
Yeah, I'm also supportive. The only thing I would just add is like, maybe a five-year revisit. This technology is changing very fast. What's available now might not be the same as what's available in the future. So as that changes, let's look at what we can deliver.
So I'm completely supportive of this initiative. It's good to give developers and technology experts something to aim towards, and this is what the guidance document will. I remember discussing this about eight years ago in a debate, actually, and too, with the next steps of our cellular master plans, our cellular technology out here, and showing what small cell technology was. And the only terminology I can use was a keg on top of a telephone pole. And that's what some of these look like. I'm not saying that's a problem, but you're seeing more of them without clear aesthetics being placed in there. We have the first ones were in downtown Montauk. I think one of the best things that happened for the Gateway Project, which I know the Supervisor supported, when we drive in the Montauk, drive in the Montauk, it's wonderful to see the water with all of the power lines down and buried. That was a great project. But just behind there was a small cell. That small cell was actually moved, but now you have second house, the ocean. It's a breathable moment. And with that small cell moved, and that could possibly come in with those historical districts, as we discussed here, or context, if it's SAS or other things. You're starting to see at least three more small cell technologies that have been installed on Three More Harbor. Sorry, on Springs Fireplace Road, there's one over by Copices, too. We talked about the shrouding and that. And then you have the other ones that have multiple antenna dishes, if you want to say, on them, on the stretch also. So I think this is a good time coming, moving forward, knowing that this is going to be the technology that we're probably going to see here for five years, maybe more on there. So I'm fully supportive, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Great. And I think just so that for the public to understand, this proposal is not to exceed $14,300. And, you know, I remember, David, you know, when COVID hit and we first went on, we were all, you know, doing our meetings from home. That's when the proposal came from Cityscape to do a wireless master plan and update the code. And when we adopted the plan, I think what we basically said to AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, Verizon, is that we're open for business. Because when we did that survey, it was clear that, you know, we needed more connectivity here. And this is just another step forward. And, you know, I agree with your reasoning and rationale. I think it's going to, we are open for business, but we need to, you know, increase wireless connectivity. And we also need to be cognizant of staff time. And if folks can come in, AT&amp;T can pick up this guideline and know exactly what we're asking for, it's going to make these things, you know, these applications move a lot quicker. So appreciate you bringing this to us, Tina. Yeah, and just to emphasize what these are and why they're important is because they're like boosters for the signals from the macro towers. And as we see with new installation of macro towers, there are still gaps, which these will help fill in for folks for connectivity across the town. I mean, we feel it when we're going out to Montauk. I mean, it used to be if we were driving out to our work session, and you had to get your call in before you hit 40 miles an hour. And now, you know, your call goes through the entire length of the stretch, because the state put the small cell technology in. And I believe when you mentioned on Spring Fireplace Road, that's on the county portion of the road, right? Where the county has installed some small cell technology.
That's correct. And just knowing that it's coming in here, and Crown Council is starting to install their infrastructure and fiber right now, among others, per a previous discussion on there. This is good timing on it as we move forward. And again, I didn't actually recognize until Councilmember Rogers stated in the Supervisor, the amount of staff hours this is going to save right now. If there's guidance out there to these cellphone distributors, we want to say, that is a tremendous help off your department, then you can help the rest, the residents of the town of East Hampton. So that's something I didn't recognize until this discussion.
Great. All right, beautiful. Thank you, Tina. Thanks so much. Okay, next up, we have the Community Development Block Grant Recommendations. We welcome you, Mark.
Thank you. Let me...
Do you want Patrick can run the PowerPoint, if you want to stay at the podium?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Patrick, if you could pull up the Community Development Block Grant Recommendation, and Mark will present it.
Good morning. I'm Mark Morgan Perez, Director of Housing and Community Development. I'm here to present the offices' recommendations for the CDBG program for 2026. The CDBG program has been in effect in the town of East Hampton for over 20 years. It's a federal funding program. Money is dispersed to the county and then distributed to towns in the consortium. We receive, on average, between four and six requests a year. This year, we had four eligible requests totaling an amount of $167,500,000. There was one request that was ineligible. The requests are divided between a public service portion and a public improvement portion. We had two public service requests and two public improvement requests. Next slide, please. So on the public service request, we had Maureen's Haven Homeless Shelter Counseling Services. They're the only provider of homeless services on the East End, and they really do a great job in providing services for homeless people, mobile shelters. Ola of Eastern Long Island does family advocacy, mostly for the Latino community. And we both, in prior years, contributed to Maureen's Haven and to Ola. The Springs Improvement Society, Ashwag National, that's a new request, and that's a public improvement request. And I can get into the details on another slide. And the Windmill Housing Request, which is also a public improvement request, is a continuation, additional funding for a project that they've been working on over the years, and need additional funds to complete the ADA kitchen request. Next slide, please. This is just a snapshot of what we've given in previous years, and you can see Maureen's Haven, Ola, and Windmill there. Next slide, please. And again, this was just an overview to give you an idea of... And again, this was just an overview to give you an idea of the amounts that have been requested and allocated in the past and the breakdowns. You can see again that this year's request of $167,500 is larger than prior requests, but it's our understanding that for towns in the consortium, our request is actually much lower and the county could end up with more funds to distribute. So they've encouraged us to ask for what we need. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a breakdown for awareness to see how money has been dispersed over the years and to see who it's been dispersed to, many familiar players. Again, the new request here, someone who's never requested before, is Ashwag Hall. And my understanding is that's something that people would like to see supported here. Next slide, please. So again, for Ashwag Hall, you can see the breakdown for what the $95,000 they're requesting is. ADA for the front door, ADA deck, a walkway, solar panels, drainage, and HVAC. And again, this is just a wish list. If the county has all of the money to fund it, they can do that. If not, we can prioritize. Windmill, again, $52,500 for the ADA kitchens and that's a continuation of an ongoing project.
And this is for Windmill 1, correct?
Again, public service request, I've mentioned Maureen's Haven, $5,000. Again, they're the only homeless services provider on the East End. And Ola, $15,000 for family advocacy. Next slide, please. So based on the information you have, you would agree upon the list and the funding amounts. A resolution would need to be adopted by the 20th and then the county needs to receive these requests by December 1st. And I'd also like to thank Lyndon Norris and Ann Bell in the office for administering the program and really basically doing the brunt of the work of ongoing compliance and monitoring and coordination with the county.
So are you recommending we put in a request for the 167.5?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, it's our understanding that other municipalities, you know, can request quite a bit more. So we're never quite sure how the numbers will pan out, but there's a chance we could get it.
If you don't ask, you don't get.
So.
Motto. Okay.
Thank you.
Board have questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, comments, look, I think all of these are incredibly, I'm just working through them. Windmill Housing, that's been an ongoing project. One thing I think is important for the public to know is that, from my understanding, that new kitchen design that's going in actually reduces the number of smoke alarms going off, which has been problematic for that building. So that's a kind of big win there as those do get updated. Ashwag Hall is obviously a vast community resource. The money we put into, you know, helping restore that and bring it up to standard is critical, so I'm very supportive of that. Ola, you know, with what's going on at a federal level right now, that resource for our town residents is critical. So the funding we get to them, I'm fully supportive of. And obviously with the homeless shelter, you know, that is something that, it's the only provider out here of that service, so I'm fully supportive of that as well.
Tom, you got it right. Any more comments?
One for one.
Yeah. There you go.
Do you want to just explain why the East Hampton Housing Authority Route 114 request? Because Katie came to the public hearing and asked for solar panels there.
Yes.
Why that's considered by the county as ineligible?
I've been, we reached out to the county and basically, hang on, I actually have a description here. It's a new construction project. And so my understanding is that for CDBG, they won't fund implementation of new solar panels, they will fund retrofits. And the county recommended that Katie could apply for home funds later in the year and that that would be a good pathway for her.
Great. Will you communicate that to Katie?
I have.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, we spoke about it this morning.
Okay, great. So you'll have a resolution then on for Thursday night?
Yes.
Because we need to do that in order to have it done by December 1st.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're, I'm going to jinx it. We're cruising. Okay. Andy Gates, you're up. We're going to hear from Andy regarding the Hog Creek South End Preserve's draft management plan. And Scott's going to run the PowerPoint, which we appreciate. And we also have Michael Jordan here, who is the co-chair, right? At the correct title of the Nature Preserve Committee. So thanks for joining us today, Michael.
All right. You want to put the map out? Sure. All right, good morning. Yes, I'm here to speak about the Hog Creek South End Preserve's management plan. This is a group of small properties at the south end of Hog Creek. I want to check on. I guess that's the proper direction. Okay. You can see that this is a group of small properties that are all adjacent to each other at the south end of Hog Creek. Access to them is on Hog Creek Road and Kings Point Road. They total only about one and a half acres, but there is about 460 feet of shoreline. One of the properties had a, or at least one of the properties had a demolition done on it, but the latest property we acquired had a demolition, including the removal of a bulkhead, which left some eroding shoreline for the last few years. One of the primary management goals listed in this plan for these properties would be to install an enhanced wetland restoration, an EWR. An EWR will restore aquatic habitat, mitigate contaminated pour water and runoff, remediate excess nitrogen, and we would also have coriander logs installed, which will help restabilize that eroding shoreline. And then the area would be revegetated with native vegetation. There's little other use for these properties besides possibly an access for kayak use and it's just natural open space for wildlife. This management plan is pretty simple and it does have the support of the Nature Preserve Committee and the Natural Resources Department.
So Andy, can water quality funds be used to do, CPF water quality funds be used to do the enhanced wetland restoration?
Not yet, as of yet. That's actually why we're creating this management plan. This is more of a restoration, which falls under the purview of stewardship funds. And when we acquired this property, this is before we sort of made it a practice to include water quality in the purpose for acquisition.
So we go back and rehear them?
You, I can't answer that question at this time. I mean, when we, we did ask that specific question of Mr. Theo while he was still here. He's not here now. We're forming through our AMA a group to handle questions like this, but as of now, this is the easiest path forward and it's timely because the shoreline really is eroding. So by the time we get the answer, you know, some additional vegetation and trees that sort of are overhanging the edge will fall in. So we want to arrest that problem.
Folks have questions, comments for Andy or Scott?
No. So being a liaison to the Nature Preserve Committee, I want to thank the co-chairs Richman May and Michael Jordan for their assistance, along with all the members here. While this might be one of the smaller management plans as far as total lot area, it is also a very important one, being some of the headwaters of Hall Creek in that area. As many individuals know, it's a little bit of a bowl to that area and one of the access points, only access points that the town might have into the southern end there. I think the town, the use of CPF funds for open space and the collection of these multiple properties here have been very well done, Madam Supervisor, so congrats on that. But a management plan was very thought out, allows for these restoration efforts, but also the public use of the lands as intended to.
Yeah, I'll just add that the photos that you've included in the packet really show the need for the management, for some restoration of that shoreline, which is getting quite eroded. I'm supportive of the- You want to show them? If you could just cruise through there maybe, Scott, or the folks that are at home?
Stop.
So you're really getting to even start to see potential loss of trees and vegetation and that's just going to keep continuing unless something's done.
Yeah.
And coriander logs are very, it's a, I believe it goes along with the, what we consider living shorelines, restorations.
It's actually naturalized very well over the last couple of years when those houses have been removed in there then, too. As far as the grassland areas.
It's problematic.
Yep.
You can see the exposed root systems.
That's where the bulkhead been.
Is that a turtle?
No, I think it's a rock. It looks like it.
That would have been a good shot.
From here. The rock.
We got that eagle.
But besides kayaking, you could also paddleboard. Just want to point that out.
So next steps, Andy? Next steps?
Notice for public hearing?
I guess there's a notice of public hearing and then you can adopt.
Is putting it on Thursday too soon?
Have any questions?
The ESPN, we could do it if you don't mind us, Carol sneaking it in there.
We have to hear it. So we could notice it on 12:04 and hear it on 12:18?
Yep.
Is that good with everyone?
Yep. That works.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to switch over to the proposed new trail at the former AIX Hamilton Nature Preserve.
Rolls off the tongue, huh?
Yeah, it does.
I believe it actually is Al X Hamilton.
Is it Al?
It's a, it's an old preserve that the town has had since before I've been here, so.
Wow, and how long has that been?
I've been here 23 years.
23?
Yes.
That's awesome.
The Hamilton Preserve is a 45-acre nature preserve. It bounds the Old Northwest Road and Stephen Hans Path. The orange and red dashed trail that you can see actually goes, is part of Foster's Path, which goes through this parcel for about 2,500 feet. The proposed segment of trail would be an additional 1,200 feet connecting from Foster's Path out to Stephen Hans Path. The portion to the southeast of the parcel exists on private reserve area, which is not the town's responsibility. That's outside of the blue parcel. A town resident brought this proposal to the Nature Preserve Committee and we determined that no sensitive habitat would be negatively affected and the trail connection is useful to the public. The Nature Preserve Committee and the East Hampton Trails Preservation Society are both in support of the proposal. If this is approved by the board, our department would work with the Trails Preservation Society to install the trail. Michael, do you have anything you want to add on that?
That law, you've covered it.
Okay.
Just one question, is there, where the trail is ending in the southeast corner, is there any parking there for people wishing to use the trail or how would they access that?
It would just be roadside parking. There's enough area to pull off. It's not going to be likely an area that's going to draw a lot of people to it specifically. It would most likely be for neighborhood use, but it's an additional access into the trail system.
Andy, could you just tell us what happens when you establish a trail? So that folks know.
Well, we would go through with our walk behind brush hog. First, we would flag it out. We would use flagging tape.
About how wide?
Um, just maybe four feet.
So it's just, it's four foot wide?
It's a walk, for a walking trail. First, we would go and we would flag it with flagging tape so that we go through and we know exactly where we're going to go, making sure that we're not going through any sensitive areas, taking the best route, trying to avoid being too close to neighboring properties if that's possible. And then we would use our walk behind brush hog mower to mow through it, trim anything with trimmers, loppers, rake it out. And then it's just a maintenance issue from that point forward, depending on what type of vegetation it is. In this area, we're talking about a ground cover of a lot of black huckleberry. If the trail gets used, it won't need a lot of maintenance, perhaps just a once a year mow with our brush hog mower. Some places like Montauk have a lot more weeds that need a lot more regular maintenance and trimming. So anything in this area, East Hampton or Wayne Scott, is usually easier to maintain going forward. And we do have the assistance of the East Hampton Trails Preservation Society on a lot of these things.
Thank you. So what's the next step if we want to move forward with this? This doesn't require a public hearing to create a new trail. Does it require a resolution of the town board to create a new trail? Or is it just, we think it's a great idea, go forward?
Well, we've gotten, sometimes we have done them informally, but-
We have went specifically in Montauk recently when the Trails Preservation Society has assisted with the creation of new trails. So I think that's a good practice to put it on for a resolution to put an extension for this trail, maybe to the location off of Stephen Hans Path, I believe, on there and with the assistance of land stewards and Trails Preservation Society then, too. So it's noticed and written.
Okay. I can prepare a resolution for you if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's justified. It allows more people in these neighborhoods, which you can see are pretty, you know, it's pretty dense into our nature and our woods, gets them off their screen time, however they may be, and gets them to enjoy our beautiful nature and trail systems out here that our land stewards maintain.
What have we said?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy. Okay. Charlie, you're up. Let me see if I can get Patrick into, unless you, yeah.
Oh, sure.
Would you do it? That'd be awesome, Scott. The first one is the 21 Hartley Boulevard. Pommies. Patrick Scott's going to do it. You're off the hook.
So this is a proposed UR map modification in Springs on Hartley Boulevard. It is basically, it might be easier to pull up the map, the UR map. Yeah. So that is the, this one is the existing and then the next one would be the proposed. So the owners of number, it's a little confusing with all these lines, but the owners of number nine also own a portion of number 11 on that map, but not, and then it, and then number 14, or sorry, number 11, sorry, that's confusing. Number 11 and 14, they own, they don't own all of 14, so they can't create a, they can't get a buildable lot. So they're proposing to combine the lots that they own into a single lot so that they can, you know, get a building permit for that. Because of the fact that the town actually owns a section of this, that was, that's like that little 46 to 48, that is owned by the town, which I believe they acquired it with the small lots fund, so that can't be built on. So really, it's just a modification to allow for one of the lots to get bigger. It doesn't increase density here because basically 14 can't be built on.
So the town owns 14 and be just to the right of 45, be 46, 47, 48.
Yeah. If you go down to the next-
Yeah, there's minimum lot area that can't be created on there. This came to the town board maybe two years ago, I believe, also.
Yeah, it was slightly different.
Yes, and that, in that time, they wanted to actually modify the map to potentially make two substandard lots on there with the knowledge that the board didn't support that, but with how we exited that was that they could always have at least one buildable lot on here. Now they're just trying to modify what the size of that one buildable lot is. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's actually making it a conforming lot, so it'll be 20,000 square feet now. And it's the last from 46 to 50, that would be the new lot 14, but that would no longer be buildable.
And so the town is not giving up any of their land here on 46, 47, 48 on there.
No, no, they, these property owners already own all this land. They're just reshifting the lines of the UR map so that they can get a building permit.
I'm supportive.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. And I just want to note that the planning board was also supportive. They said the proposed changes were consistent with the urban- Uh, they said the proposed changes were consistent with the urban renewal plan. Uh, the request is practical, based on comments of the town engineer and the planning department. And they recommended we approve the requested, uh, map modification. And also the RENA group, who are the consultants on this, also, uh, recommended that we approve the modification. So I'm in favor of it as well. I think it makes good zoning sense.
Sure.
Next steps, Charlie? This goes to public hearing?
Yeah, so we'll schedule a public hearing. Um, it'll probably be December 18th, I think, based on the way the date's filed.
Yeah, if you put it on for Thursday.
Yeah, I'll put it on for Thursday to notice it, to get it in the paper, because it's 10 days' notice for the UR map, so. But it'll, uh, it'll be, yeah, so I'll get that resolution out for that.
Great. All right, then you had the next one, which is 267 Akabonic Road.
Sure. That one. This one is, uh, it's a subdivision that was going through the, uh, it's a lot off of Akabonic that was, you know, big enough to be subdivided, uh, in terms of lot areas. All conforming. It went through the planning board process. Planning board signed off on it. One of the conditions of their approval is that the town board, because it's a UR map, uh, property, it needs to be, the map, the UR map needs to be changed as well. So that's the, they're kind of the final step to get this fully signed off on. Uh, so it'd go from one big lot to two lots. With a common driveway, uh, off Akabonic.
With the 20-foot wide access point, which is up to code?
Yep.
The one, the, I under, I understand why it's here because it's a UR map. It's a nice little find down here, subdivision. But overall, in the scenic easement that's proposed off Akabonic, I, I hope the language does allow for the water lines still go through there?
Yeah, so that, uh, actually, you know, kind of a funny, uh, where the, that 20-foot easement goes for the access, that actually was the paper road that was abandoned into the property. So, there is, the easement that is filed actually doesn't go all the way over. I pulled the actual easement language and from when it was filed back a long time ago. It only covered the, at that point, the road hadn't been abandoned, so the easement doesn't actually cover that anyway. So there is no conflict there.
Okay, so you, and there's a utility easement that goes down there for both property owners also.
Yeah, there will be an easement over, through the, uh, as shown on that survey, that there'll be a utility easement to get water and electric and everything back to.
That was requested by the, the engineer.
Yeah, and that's a condition of the, uh, site plan approval.
Yeah.
Number seven. And eight, since it'll be below ground.
The same step here, Charlie, going to public hearing?
Yep, so I can do that for the same, same date.
Same dates.
Okay. And the last one is, uh.
21 Abraham?
21 Abraham, yep.
Got it.
So, this one, um, is a little different.
Uh, go down to the map.
Yeah, this one, it, uh, came up, Tarp, uh, Seamus McGrath from Tarver and Lester called me asking a question about urban renewal in general, and when I started looking at the map, I noticed an issue that could cause, his clients own a portion of lot 60 on that map. Um, and as you can see on the map, that Pavilion Place there, that Hatchmark Road, is set to be abandoned. Which, when I looked at the map, I caused, it caused a problem because if you did actually abandon all that, if number 61 abandoned that section adjacent to their property between Abraham's Path, it would create a situation where number 60 would be landlocked because the portion between, uh, throughout Harbor and, uh, Abraham's Path has already been abandoned. So, I just had concerns that that would create a problem where then I don't want to have to deal with, the town is wanting to have to deal with someone getting landlocked.
Yeah.
Uh, so I brought it up to Seamus and, and I was going through it with him. And as I was looking at the map, I noticed some other kind of quirky little issues in the map, uh, that I wanted, I thought should be addressed just for clarity and to, you know, fix the, to make it correct. Uh, number 63 at the end of that little, uh, point there, for some reason, that was on the urban renewal map, but it actually isn't, if you look at the tax maps, it doesn't match. Uh, so that, that's not how the lots are actually configured in real life. So I wanted to make sure that was changed to reflect it. So if you go down one, that to the proposed, yeah, you can see.
Yeah.
Changed the abandonment stuff to show that 60 has access to Abraham's Path. Took that section of the, um, the map out that isn't supposed to be there at the end in that little point, and then added access points, uh, because it didn't have that previously for where the properties were supposed to take access. And that was, uh, yeah, so it was kind of a, just more of an administrative as I was going through it, and I realized that there was some things that could be tweaked to be, you know, more accurate to the facts on the ground.
Has number 59 abandoned Pavilion Place also in this map? Compared to the last one?
Yeah, so they did abandon this. So that map had also just updated to show that sections have been abandoned. And so they abandoned, so like the stuff since Hatchmark, Hatchmark has.
That was my question because of the way it was prior, like 60 could have taken its way out through.
Yeah, they had already done the abandonment.
So, since that's been abandoned, the only way out for 60 is off Abraham's Path, not off of 3-Mo Harbor Road.
So this would allow for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Charlie, first of all, I, I thank you for globally looking at the map.
Yeah.
And not just in the singular microscope on this one then too. And if you were looking at it to put it all together, because, uh, you know, urban renewal maps can be confusing.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate you taking that global look at it then too.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, it was, this one was, uh, this has some background. I think this used to be also.
Yeah, what was the, the hotel?
It was something, it was something weird in the, it used to be.
Hotel up there?
Yeah, some sort of resort zoned or something like that at one point, and I, I don't know when, a long time ago, I think, but then it's not.
Harbor Heights.
Yeah, yeah, so it's own, yeah, I don't have a full map up.
There, there's a large hotel that was up there and maybe burnt down.
Yeah.
Wow.
Charlie, um, on lot 63, which, you know, is incorrectly shown in the original map with that kind of pointy bit on the end, what is currently on that?
Those are, uh, there's a subdivision north of these lots, and those are like little flag points to get to the.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know, it might have just been a, because I looked back at the old tax map and it all showed it like that, so I don't know. It's just, it's just an oversight.
Okay.
Same thing, public hearing?
Yep, do the same thing.
Okay, nice work.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. So we're through all eight topics, so we are on to liaison reports. Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Supervisor. Um, Ambigant Sit, uh, Situance Advisory Committee, uh, we met with a group of residents last night on Main Street to review the existing lighting. Um, it was a very dark night, I will say that, and actually kind of really showed up some of the dark areas and, you know, the need for some of this lighting. Um, you know, some of the crosswalks specifically, I think the lighting is not really where it needs to be. Um, you know, we also obviously had that unfortunate accident during the daytime, um, a few weeks ago. Uh, and my, my thoughts are with, um, the patient there. They're recovering well, as I understand. Um, but this is obviously an area that I do think needs addressing, and I thank you to all the residents who came out last night to view the situation. I, I did reach.
And that's what mostly leaves off the trees, right?
That is, and that's what I did emphasize to everybody last night, is, you know, when you're looking up at the lights right now, you can see them because the leaves aren't on the trees, and that does change significantly. Um, you know, but the sidewalks too, there's, there's a lot of, you know, dark areas on those sidewalks that we want to get lit, uh, to avoid trip hazards. So, it was a very helpful meeting to hear different sides of that. I did reach out to the planning department because there'd been some discussion about had someone put an application for a bubble at sport time. Planning department has not had anything submitted to them at this point, but we will keep an eye, eye on that. For the IT department, um, the, the head of IT wanted me to reach out again. We, we've seen, um, additional phishing attempts, uh, to the public using, um, town, um, headers on, on emails getting, um, going out there. So, uh, IT director wanted me just to reiterate some of the critical points here, um, what to do if you get an email that you think is from the town. Immediate actions to take. Do not interact with the email. Stop all communication with a suspected phishing source, be it an email, text, call, etc. Change your passwords. Prioritize accounts that may have been compromised, email banking work systems. Use strong, unique passwords for each account. Use multi-factor authentication, MFA wherever possible. Scan for malware. If you did click a suspicious link or download a file, run a full antivirus malware scan on your device. Notify your IT department and escalate to their IT security team immediately. Monitor accounts. Watch for unauthorized activity in your bank accounts, credit cards, email, cloud services, social media. Uh, and, and then who to report the phishing to. So if you're in an organization, report it to your IT security team, um, your supervisor, your compliance officer, if you think sensitive data was exposed. Um, you know, there, there are external agencies you can report this to as well, the Federal Trade Commission. Reportfraud.ftc.gov, cybersecurity infrastruc, and infrastructure security agencies, which is the cisa.gov/report. And there is an anti-phishing work group, um, reportphishing@apwg.org. I am going to ask the IT department if we can kind of put a link to this information on the town website for people moving forward because this is obviously something that, um, and I'm going to say criminals are continuing to try and do, uh, to exploit you. So, um, unfortunate, but, um, do, do stay prepared on that one. Human Services, um, a few updates here. We have training going on on Wednesday, November 19th. Uh, our case manager will be attending a full day of interactive community conversation professionals training at the Riverhead Library about abuse in later life. Uh, this abuse in later life project's a national program funded by the Department of Justice Office on violence against women, and is an important opportunity for Suffolk County to strengthen our collective efforts to address the issue. Nutrition, the unduplicated congregant participant count for the week of November 10th through November 14th was 80, and the undupicated grab and go participant count for the same week was 72. Uh, health, uh, the next East Hampton Healthcare Foundation for Health Fair is scheduled for December 5th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at St. Luke's Hole Hall. And there's a Safe Talk for High School Students Only taking place Friday, November 21st at the East Hampton Library. Uh, the Human Services case manager will be participating as the community resource person for the workshop. Safe Talk Workshop is a half-day training in suicide alertness. It prepare, it helps participants recognize a person with thoughts of suicides and connects them with resources who can help, help them.
I took that training at the library. It was really.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going to be attending that on the 21st.
And I did the, um, I went to the Riverhead with the, that was the retreat that's doing the elder abuse, that they got that. And Diane and I went to that training, which was really eye-opening.
Yeah. Yeah. ADU Committee, uh, just a reminder, we have the public hearing on the 20th. Um, that's on the agenda already. Uh, East Hampton Fire Commissioners, uh, the November meeting has been canceled for this month. The next meeting will be January 27th.
December meeting.
Sorry, uh, no, um. There was going to be a commissioners' meeting on the Tuesday.
Commissioners meeting.
Yes, Commissioners' meeting was originally scheduled for the Tuesday prior to Thanksgiving. That's now been canceled. Will be taking place January 27th, 7:00 PM at SAG Harbor Fire Department. Arts Council Committee, uh, if we could bring up that flower, please, Jason, be great. Uh, this Friday, uh, November 21st at 6:00 PM, we'll be having the Creative Networking Night, uh, in East Hampton Town Hall. Got a really interesting lineup here. We have Joanne Roberts, who's a filmmaker, who's going to be discussing and showing her film, uh, The Bonnikers, talking about the process of filmmaking and film production. I just want to advise people too that that will be showing in its full feature, uh, feature length at the SAG Harbor Theater on December 14th. Um, Maria Keolani is an artist. She will be talking about her creative process, uh, specifically in painting, and giving a live demonstration, uh, of her painting process. Meg Gibson, who's an actor, will be talking about the process of acting theater and will present a character reading. And Carlos Barrios, uh, guitar maker and musician, will be showing a clip, uh, from his documentary about guitar making, uh, and the process. And will also be giving a music presentation with his band Out East. So it's going to be a really interesting and fun event, so I hope all can make it. Again, it will be in, uh, East Hampton Town Hall on November 21st at 6:00 PM. Wildlife Management Committee, um, and thank you to Bill Crane for calling in on this. We, we had on Friday a, a very kind of, um, deep and interesting conversation with regards to, you know, the, the tick issue and, you know, how to manage that. And, you know, there, there's different, um, processes we're exploring. One is the Fort Poster Program, uh, and, and the other is the, the management of the deer population itself. Obviously, there's huge ethical and moral implications for people on this. Um, anytime you take any life, be it a fish, a tick, or a deer, um, for some people, that, that is a challenge. Um, you know, I, I think coming from the Tick Advisory Committee as well, there's obviously kind of, uh, an epidemic going on here with, with tick-borne diseases. We actually had the first fatality last week of someone of the alpha galle disease. It was a 47-year-old pilot, um, who died from that. Um, so, i- it's something that we, we look to continue to discuss. I, I want to thank the committee members because obviously with something as, um, you know, as, as deep as this, emotions can run high, but I, I think all committee members behave in an exemplary way. And we'll be going, bringing those recommendations to the board, um, early January, it looks like, at this point. And that is everything on my update.
Thank you, Tom. David?
Uh, in aquaculture, the shellfish season is wrapped up. All oysters, clams have been seeded onto the public bottoms, and the scallops are being overwintered in that peak in 3-Mo Harbors. Aquaculture is now turning to the growing of sugar kelp, kelp, excuse me, in the lab, uh, for other pilot projects in Hog Creek and Akabonic. Uh, these will, uh, sugar kelp will be planted in the field, uh, field next month. And maybe it's another discussion I can bring barley back to discuss because that's another, uh, avenue and reach of the aquaculture department in growing stuff to try to diversify and also pull nitrogen out of the water. Otherwise, uh, getting the field sites are broken down, the hatchery building, and the surrounding cleanup. Just get ready for, uh, the start of the 2026 season. Going back to lane management, uh, also, uh, we had a discussion on, uh, the 20 Springs Fireplace Road and the licensees, which will be brought to the town, uh, for authorization on Thursday. I want to let the town board also know that we've had actually many trees being removed out of there. That was being, uh, assistance is being donated by a, a local vendor, uh, removing some black locusts and, and a lot of the cedar trees in that area. Also, the town is out to bid for removal of the barn, which is part of the old, uh, Cheryl's Dairy Farm. That barn to rehabilitate was going to be near a million dollars, so the decision is to, uh, to remove it, uh, and then allow potentially, uh, for a licensee to build a new one if needed. That would be up to code and much safer than the one that is there. So that would be upcoming also then too. In Recreation, online registration is currently available for girls' winter basketball, grades three to eight at the Ambigant School, Saturdays, uh, December 6th through March 7th. Uh, the, uh, the winter basketball for boys and girls, uh, and now, uh, for grades one to two and second grade have been sold out. So congrats to the public. That's awesome. Let everyone know, Tom, you're ready for the 49th Annual Turkey Trot Run for Fun is currently, currently over 500 people registered already. Uh, additional donations are also welcome, and, uh, the, and you can only sign up solely through the online registration page. All proceeds will be benefiting the local food pantries on there. And that will be happening. We look for good weather, and if not, we look for a great crowd out there then too, uh, and please enjoy.
It's the 49th annual, correct?
That is correct. Exactly. You know, uh, it's, it, it's, it's pretty, pretty great. And I do have to say, the modernization by going and doing, uh, uh, registering online has helped out John Rooney and his staff, which do a wonderful job, uh, handing out all the t-shirts and that then too. So we look forward to, uh, personal best records there. Uh, also, uh, within Recreation, notify me, please sign up the town's notify me page to receive notifications, either email, texts, or both, when online program registration has become available. Continue to let everyone know, uh, that our, uh, the town is currently consistently trying to improve our public safety. And at this time, uh, security cams or cameras are being installed in the Ambigant Municipal Parking Lot, which has been on the agenda for years, and that's currently happening right now. As far as highway, Montauk sidewalks, uh, that, that work to try to reduce trip hazards as well under his way out there. And, uh, they're, they're making great strides on there, and we'll continue to look, look in those locations of the Central Business District. Montauk Harbor dredging update, it was on, uh, the weekly meeting just this morning for the Army Corps of Engineers. There has been damage to the dredge, uh, due to the large boulders that are underneath there. They sheared off a 16-inch drive shaft on there. So if that's saying anything to the type of material there, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's large material, uh, for a large machine. Either way, uh, the dredge operator is very confident that the dredge, uh, part has been, being brought back, and then the dredge will be up, uh, moving forward and starting up by this weekend, and it'll still, uh, be able to stay within the dredging window then too, and I'll have more to report as the weeks go on. As far as the ditch dune update, and I'll co-parent this with, uh, Councilmember Rogers, she might have more updates also. Uh, there, uh, nearly 2,500 cubic yards of sand have been placed on the beaches so far, more every day right now. And they're getting past Page Station 12, that's up there then too, uh, and they're shaping the dunes. So, to the general public, please be careful in the construction, uh, areas. And then too, they're, are cordoned off temporarily for your own safety. Last thing, I want to, uh, thank all the high school athletes for all the sports in the fall, uh, fall seasons. Uh, I think you, uh, played really great. I also want to thank, uh, Coach Joe McKenna's staff, uh, the. Uh, I think you, uh, played really great. I also want to thank, uh, Coach Joe McKenna's staff, uh, the supervisor, myself attended, uh, the Sayville Football Game. At Sayville this week, uh, Bonnet took it to them, but unfortunately Sayville had a little too much riding their, uh, their quarterback to a victory. But kudos to them all. Uh, what I have to say about that and what I also have to say about that game and also in coordination with Tom last time about the rally for, uh, one of my greatest friends, Robbie Ballness, who is, uh, uh, who is, um, navigating challenges right now. The community at both of those events showed up greater than I've seen ever before. The amount of individuals that are at the Sayville game cheering them on from the kids that were in the stands to the parents, to the random elected officials that we were there, you know, just cheering Bonnet on. There were more East Hampton Bonnet fans at that game than Sayville fans, in my humble opinion. And the team noticed it. The kids noticed it.
And you were loud.
A professional cheerer. And then at the Rally for Rob, uh, the amount of individuals that showed up to support that family, the Ball and his family, uh, was, was tremendous. On there, it just shows that the constant, uh, community, strength of this community, that our ties are unboundable and unbreakable. And I, and I want to thank the community for showing up and for all of your constant support for these individuals. And that's all I have.
Beautifully said, David. Kate?
Yes, I have a litter action committee update. Uh, their last meeting was November 12th. I didn't attend as we had a town board meeting, but I did receive, uh, these following notes as a summary of the meeting. Russell Young, our, uh, code enforcement director, uh, attended the meeting and, uh, gave a lot of time and answered a lot of questions for folks. So I thank him for that. He also, uh, let everybody know that he started working for the town in 2011 and this is his ninth year in the code enforcement department. So he has a, a very deep background. They went over and discussed the town's recent code change, not so recent now, but not that far away. Adding cover to cover and secure any load you have on the back of your car, outside of your car, a pickup truck, a truck, et cetera. That's a fairly new code. So your, the, the load in those areas must be covered and secured. They talked about how code enforcement enforces the code and, uh, Russell just described that where they've been in the recycling center, handing out flyers to remind residents to cover their load. Um, and, uh, just at, still in the education phase uh, of, of this, uh, new code. There's of course a sign, uh, that's been put up by the Springs Recycling Center, needs to be moved. Also, they talked about how tissue, uh, tickets were issued, they are issued. The tickets are called field appearance tickets and the fee is $250, uh, for an uncovered load. We also, uh, found out that the code enforcement also just checks at the Montauk Recycling Center as well. The, uh, parking lots and dumpsters always remain a source of, uh, litter that ends up on our town roads that ends up costing taxpayers money to clean up, but also, uh, does damage to the environment and, and the visual impacts as well. The litter action committees may come forward with a code for the, that type of garbage, uh, pickup to be updated. So that, uh, you know, reminding businesses that they're meant to clean up their, uh, parking lots, their, their areas as well. Dumpsters are an issue as well with overloading the dumpsters and then them being uncovered. Also, um, also that applies to construction sites where construction debris is, is blowing all over the place. Just a reminder to everyone. Dumpsters are supposed to be covered and not overloaded and emptied as appropriate. The Litter Action Committee continues to do several pickups, um, along, um, Springs Fireplace Road. Uh, and other places where there's businesses. And again, if folks can, business owners can remember that they are by code meant to keep their areas clean, particularly anyone that has food service areas, outdoor dining areas. To please make sure that there's appropriate litter, um, containers there. Also, we've talked about, uh, putting up, uh, some kind of sticker on our town garbage cans, uh, saying that, uh, household litter is, uh, is not, um, permitted and it's a violation of town code to bring your household garbage to our town litter. Garbage cans, uh, I'm working on a, a type of sticker that perhaps we'll, we'll be able to put on them as well. They're working, uh, also working on their Citizen Sam Campaign Update. More information on that will be coming on who exactly Citizen Sam is and their new spring campaign. The Litter Action Committee is also planning to go speak to students at the, at the schools. And looking at producing some 15, 10 to 15-second, uh, videos by students, uh, furthering the, the initial outreach that we did through student videos with Francesco. And, uh, that is all I have.
Great, thank you, Kate. So I just wanted to let folks know Thursday night, we'll have the resolution to adopt the 2026 budget. This has been a five-plus month process and with a lot of input from department heads and town board and community. So excited about that. Uh, tomorrow, our town administrator, Becky Hanson, is going to the East Hampton High School for a job fair. So, um, looking forward to that. Letting folks, high school students know that there are opportunities here to come to work for the town. We have gotten a request from the East Hampton Food Pantry. They're doing their annual harvest food drive on Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the East Hampton Middle School. And they're asking folks to drop off donations, both, um, you know, they're looking for, uh, food donations, but also monetary donations is also very helpful. And, um, we're going to be posting that on our social media and also with links to, um, for monetary donations to the Montauk Springs and East Hampton Food Pantries. We know that we're seeing higher demand and, uh, the food pantries could use our support. And lastly, I just want to remind folks again that we are doing a Toys for Tots, um, program here at Town Hall. And this is in conjunction with the CSCA, the PBA, the Department Heads Association and the, um, Superior Officers Association. So we look forward to, to folks, um, donating unwrapped toys for kids in our community. And now we can move on to resolutions. David, you're first up.
I apologize. It's my privilege to offer Resolution 2025 1493. It's the proof appropriation of aquaculture reserve. And the amount of 45, $475, uh, were increasing for appropriation of reserves and we're also increasing the same amount of $475 for travel, conferences and dues.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. 1494 is a budget modification for the, uh, Department of Land Acquisition and Management. This is, uh, to make the budget modifications for acquisitions of 41 and 47 Cove Hall Farm Roads. We're increasing the revenue budget line for unappropriated, unreserved surplus in the amount of $17 million. And we're also increasing the line for expenditure budget line for land acquisition in the same amount of $17 million.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have Resolution 1495 and this is a promotion and provisional appointment to environmental technician for Emily Klein. We resolve that Emily Klein is hereby appointed on a provisional basis to the full-time position of environmental technician within the Natural Resources Department at the annual salary of $60,455.62 for a 40-hour work week. This is effective retroactive to November 17th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1496 is to rele- release a security, uh, for road improvement in Urban Renewal Parcel, uh, Urban Renewal Parcel 38 in EH-12. The, um, uh, applicant, um, for the, uh, release of security is Brendan A. Moffett and Giancarlo Bruno. The parcel is at 174 Queens Lane, East Hampton, and the security to be returned is $12,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1497 is to increase the cap for services provided by the Rayner Group. Pursuant to Resolution 2025 426, the town board retained the professional engineering service of the Rayner Group to review drainage plans and similar items related to the planning department and urban renewal matters for the planning department, planning board and zoning board of appeals. Whereas the services were not to exceed $40,000. Whereas the town board, uh, directs the purchasing department to increase the cap for services not to exceed $60,000. Be it resolved, uh, that the cap is increased by $60,000 to $60,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1498 is the acceptance of Cityscape's consultant small wireless facility design guidelines proposal. We saw this presentation today. And this is, uh, the town's requesting that Cityscape consultants draft guidelines for the design of small wireless facilities. The guidelines need to balance federal requirements, local zoning authority and community aesthetics while permitting the provider to establish a reliable network. Resolved to accept Cityscape's consultant's proposal dated September 23rd, 2025 for a total not to exceed, uh, $14,300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, 1499 is to amend the cap for services provided by Cityscape consultants for 2025. And this is where the town of East Hampton is required to process applications for wireless telecommunication facilities and the town planning department, uh, who processes these applications requires professional, highly technical services for aspects of these applicant reviews. Whereas the town adopted a proposal, uh, dated May 21st, 2025. For with a cap not to exceed $13,000, resolved to amend the not to exceed allotment from $13,000 to $53,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have Resolution 2025 1500 and that's to appoint the 2025 Community Housing Advisory Board members. This is Ray Harden for Construction. Denise Shawin is the new appointment. She'll be representing real estate, Alice Hausneck, Human Services, Joanna Blancas, Banking, Andrew Garvey, Housing, Evelyn Wolf Housing and Sarah Minority is the East Hampton Village Representative. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1501 is to authorize a title search for Suffolk County Tax Map 300-60-2-7.1. The Office of Housing and Community Development requires a 40-year title search to determine the history of the property located at 8 Eau Claire Street in East Hampton. Dime Abstract has submitted a quote in the amount of $350 and I just want to disclose that I live in this neighborhood.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1502 is to accept a donation and budget modification for the police department. We're going to increase the revenue budget line, gifts and donations and the amount of $2,000 and increase expenditure, other equipment, $1,000 and medical supplies, $1,000.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1503 is a budget modification for the Office of Land Acquisition and Management. And this is for fire road tree maintenance. So we're from the overtime budget in the amount of $1,400. New York State Retirement in the amount of $3,600 moves to tree maintenance in the amount of $5,000.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
1504 is for Open Gov Inc. amend Resolution 2025 1009. And this is the Department of Information Technology has requested to upgrade the software services tier from the Open Gov Professional Services Team. So we're going to change the current expert service, uh, it was entitled Elevate to Expert Services Accelerate. And there's a change in the, um, in the amounts, the costs for the remainder of this year and for '26 and '27.
Second.
Move for discussion on that one, by me? Just quickly, just want to let the public what that's for. This is basically the changes that we're looking to implement to improve the building department's Open Gov, uh, interface with the public to expedite some types of applications and just make that system more user-friendly as a whole.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have, uh, Resolution 1505 and that's to retain P. Edward Reali, a special counsel to the Town Housing Department. This says for 2026, but I believe it's, he's, it's 2025, is it not, Jake?
It is in the warehouse clause.
Yeah. So this is, uh, Ed will help with the drafting agreements, easements and restrictive covenants, the preparation of local housing-related legislation, the handling of translational matters and the provision of general municipal and real estate legal advice. The financial impact is not to exceed $10,000. And we're excited to have Ed back. I think it was back in the seventies?
Tony Butler was, yeah.
He was.
He hired John Gilman.
Yeah, he was the town attorney. So I have a second.
A second is amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that is all we've got as far as resolutions are concerned. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into exec session for personnel, real estate, litigation, contracts, public safety and advice of council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jason at LTV for your assistance today.
Thank you, and we are off the air.